Welcome. I'd like to call the December 20th Lacey City Council meeting to order. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have, we need an approval of the agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
Is there any appeals or additions? Sing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. So first up is public recognitions and presentations and our compassionate community recognition. And it's going to be led by Jenny Hoversfeldt.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Tonight is our fourth quarter Compassion is Contagious Recognition of 2018. And we're excited to recognize two outstanding organizations from our community whose efforts have exemplified the true spirit of compassion in Lacey and throughout Thurston County. Our first recognition award is for St. Benedict's Episcopal Church for their community dinner ministry. St. Benedict's, along with the assistance of St. Andrews United Methodist Church, has been meeting an important need in our community for the past 12 years. Their community dinners were formed as a way to reach out to the community and help those in need. And they have been doing just that by opening their doors every third Saturday of the month to the homeless, needy, lonely, or just local families. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Director of this wonderful ministry, Spencer Daniels, to tell you more about their efforts in our community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Spencer Daniels. I'm Chair of the Community Dinner at St. Benedict. I want to discuss with you four matters: who we are, what we do, whom we serve, and why we do it. So St. Benedict is a mission of the Episcopal Diocese of Olympia, which doesn't mean we're centered in Olympia. The diocese runs all throughout western Washington. We had our first service in 1980 and moved to our present building in 1987. And we're located at 910 Balker Street, which if you're not familiar is, we're located right between John Paul II High School and Sacred Heart Catholic Church there on Balker. So sometimes it's hard to find, but once you've found it once, you can find it again. What we do is, every month, we have a community dinner and food bank. So we have two components of what we do. We are assisted in the community dinner by St. Andrews United Methodist Church. And we alternate who does the cooking. Every month, St. Benedict's cooks, the other month, St. Andrews cooks. But we all help out in serving and greeting our guests. We also operate a satellite food bank, a satellite of the Thurston County Food Bank at the same time. So people come to St. Benedict and they go through and have their lunch, and then they go and usually, most of them, get some food from the food bank. So whom do we serve? Well, in 2017, we had an average of just over 26 guests. And in 2018, we had a slightly lower, about 25 guests per month. But with takeout plates and second helpings and so forth, we served about, dished up about 40 plates of food. The meals range from fairly simple fare, like hot dogs or chili dogs in the summer, to a little more hearty fare for our holiday times. Most of our guests do use the food bank. I looked at our records, and in 2018, just about under half of our guests come from Lacey. So Lacey itself is indeed being served. And the rest come primarily from Olympia, with a few from Tumwater or rural Thurston County. Why do we do this? Well, the St. Benedict motto is "The hands of Christ in the heart of Lacey." So at least from St. Benedict's perspective, we do this as a matter of service to those in need or who just want to participate in fellowship. We don't say prayers, we don't hand out literature, we just want people to come and feel welcome without any qualifications or obligations. Sometimes students from St. Martin's have come and done a one-month of dinner, and that's sometimes quite an experience for them to suddenly get 40 plates of food out all at the same time. It's a learning experience. So I'd like to introduce folks who are here with us. Our vicar, Father Ed Lovelady, is here, and he's been tremendously supportive of our community dinner. We have from St. Andrews, our partner church, Rich Green, lay leader, and Amy Dickey, who is the chef, who does the cooking every other month. And she can just whip up something out of magic, and I have to do recipes. So Rich or Amy, I'd invite you to come forward if you want to say a little bit about St. Andrews. And again, we appreciate the council instituting this award and appreciate your recognizing us.
Counsel and Deputy Mayor Pratt, thank you very much for this award. As Spencer said, there's a food bank and the community dinner. And I'm not sure whether the dinner attracts the food bank people, or the food bank attracts the dinner people, but either way, they get a double benefit. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I really feel this is a great program. I'm happy to be able to present you with this appreciation of being a compassionate organization for our city. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And St. Andrews, this is yours. I want to make sure that you too receive something, because it takes more than just a few to do this. And thank you very much for both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our second recognition award this evening is to the fabulous volunteers of our very own Lacey Veterans Services Hub. After just two years of operation, our Veterans Hub booked nearly 6,000 client appointments this year. Veterans came from all over our area to get assistance with everything from VA claims and benefits, counseling and peer-to-peer support, to housing and education assistance, just to name a few. There are more than 50 South Sound Veterans Services programs and providers who have established relationships with the hub and operate out of our location here in Lacey. The day-to-day operations of our facility absolutely could not happen without the dedication of nearly 40 devoted volunteers who help out with everything from the reception desk, client registration, data entry, and much more, I'm sure. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Shane Sullivan, who will be representing their volunteers, to come up and tell us more about their impactful work in our community.
Deputy Mayor and council members, thank you for this time, this opportunity, and this award. As Jenny had said, we have been in business now, or in operation now, for a little over two years. And just in this, I'd like to be able to cover some numbers of operation, of what we have done, and what we've been able to accomplish, and what it is that we actually do on a day-to-day basis in the year of 2018. In the year of 2018, we've served over in Thurston County and for the hub, had over 1,500 vets come in and link up with our VSOs to be able to, the Veteran Service Officers, to be able to ensure that they have the proper amount of claim and disability claim, or the Veterans Officers will end up being the go-between, between the veteran or the dependents of the veteran and the VA itself. VA can be very strenuous, it can be just very complicated up there for the people that don't know what they're doing. And for the Veteran Service Officers, they make a really good go-between, and it's very successful. At the mental health counseling, they logged in over 1,200 client hours, where they were coming in and be able to get underneath the same roof that all these services are able to get, that have the 1,200 of client hours. The housing assistance, in 2018, we've had over 1,000 people come in and sign in and get some sort of housing assistance. That could be somebody being pulled off the streets, or being underneath a bridge, or in some, you know, tent somewhere, not having the inside toiletries or roof over their head, and they're able to come in and get the services that they need through the hub and through the different vendors that we have at the hub, and we're able to get them inside of housing. There's also financial assistance. It's a draw this time of year. There's different Thurston County Veterans Assistance Funds. We have a representative there that does that. We've serviced over, there's 550 different people that have come in and received those services. Nutrition assistance, we are also, as the churches that were before us, we are also a satellite location of the Thurston County Food Bank. People are able to come in, they don't know where their next meal is going to be, and they don't, they just don't have any idea on where their food is coming from. They're able to come in and get no-cook bagged food, so they're able to take this bag of food wherever it is that they're residing, maybe in a tent, in a car, or in the woods somewhere, and they can just open up the bag of food and be able to eat it. And that, you know, of course, we've got to be able to feed the people that are out there as we're servicing all these other, the other services. We also have the Employment Agency onsite, where if someone is able to come in and they can get different classes, they are able to do a resume writing class, and they're able to find the career that they're actually, be able to fit them, and be able to do with their different disabilities, what it is they're trying to do after service. We are able to get people healthcare, get them registered up at the VA with the help of the services of the Veteran Service Officers. We're also able to have the legal assistance, which is something that was fairly new. The legal assistance, we have a couple of times out of the month, and that is going to be increasing in the year of 2019, where they're able to come in and get legal assistance and questions answered by an attorney. Those are things that are, a brief overview of the services that the hub offers. But in a big picture of things, what the hub is doing for the community and the veterans is when they come in, we have a different variety of different veterans that come in, we're able to impact their lives. The ones that are homeless and they're not doing well in their lives, we're able to get them healthcare, we're going to give them the benefits that they need and get them on a better road than they were before. The ones that are doing fine, and they're doing, you know, what they're supposed to be doing, we get their children taken care of for the educational benefits, if that applies to them. Are able to decipher what it is that their veteran benefits actually mean, so they understand it, and it's not just a bunch of jargon that the VA comes up with that none of us really understand. Countless experiences that I've had in the two years that I volunteered at the hub, and you can ask any of the other volunteers that are here, where you have people that come in and we impact, we impact their lives in a way where, I remember it was the first winter that we were working, and there was a gentleman that came in and he had to find housing. He's like, "I can't do it anymore." He was an older gentleman and weighed probably 130 pounds and had everything he owned on his back, which was absolutely nothing. We ended up finding him a place to stay, and then we finished it up. A week later, we found him housing. Three weeks later, he came in and he was a completely different man. Haircut, shaved, cleaned up, and fed, and he was healthy. And he was, that story that he is always reminding one of me, that we go that extra mile for someone that comes in and they're cranky, and what it is that the Veterans Hub does, but of course, that the volunteers do to make the place run. The place would not be able to run without the volunteers, the volunteer coordinator, which all of that basically means is I'm the one that gets to put together the schedule, which is very rewarding. But it's also very rewarding that we have such a huge amount of different kinds of people, different backgrounds, different upbringings, but everybody comes to the hub for the same service and the same bottom line, is to be able to take care of the veterans that need the help that they need. I'd like to thank you for this time, and thank you for the award, and we very much appreciate your efforts.
So I am so proud of this wraparound program. It started small, and it's grown, and it's grown, and it's gotten national attention as we talk about it. And so the work that the volunteers do is just magnificent. I, you know, I can't even vocalize how wonderful this really is for people. So please, accept our Compassionate Community Award, and I just really appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much.
So let's get moving on to the topic. Michael?
If I may, Madam Deputy Mayor. First of all, I'd like to recognize Shane. He's also a board member on Thurston County Veteran Services Hub, which has Veteran Services that I also board member with. But to all three organizations, you're all very worthy of the recognition for what you do for your community. And I tell people all the time, it's like a broken record, Lacey's a home because of this, and not just a place to live. The people in it, they're compassionate, caring spirits for everybody, no matter who they are, veterans, non-veterans alike, you know, any age, any culture, any religion, et cetera. You know, it's just, we care about people in this community, and for you guys, you are Lacey. So thank you.
Thank you. So I've just got my earring again caught. So next up is public comments that are not on the agenda. And first up is Lawrence Stefan. And please state your name and generally what your title, and keep it to around three minutes, please.
Deputy Mayor Pratt and Commissioner, I'm pleased to be here. Earlier this week, I received a phone call inviting me to come and present some about the Olympia Union Gospel Mission. And if I had clients who I thought would be of benefit to you in learning a little bit more, to bring them with me. So I've done that this evening, and will probably take about nine or 10 minutes of your public comment time. So I've been associated with the mission since 1995 when it was founded, and first as a board member, and now in retirement, I'm the executive director. The mission is an evangelical Christian organization with a commitment to serve Thurston County by sharing the good news of a new life in Jesus Christ by meeting the mental, physical, and spiritual needs of individuals in crisis. Our services are offered without fee to everyone, and although there is a spiritual component to everything we do, individuals can choose to engage spiritually or not, yet all gets hurt. The one exception is in our drug and alcohol recovery services, where we see filling a huge hole in someone's life with the Holy Spirit as the real answer to addiction. And there are three ladies here that can talk to you about that in a moment. In downtown Olympia, we operate a day drop-in center, where weekdays, individuals can receive a hot meal three times a day, once on Saturdays and twice on Sundays. We serve over 120,000 meals a year. They can also take showers, do laundry, visit clothing bank, and participate in Bible studies and church services on Sunday. In the evening, the dining room is converted into a shelter where up to 70 adults and sometimes up to 18 children can sleep safe, dry, and warm. Since 2001, the mission has offered no-fee emergent dental care to individuals living below 225% of the federal poverty level. And in 2008, we added vision care as well. We have an outreach food ministry called the Veg Out Program that delivers 8,000 pounds or more of produce and foodstuffs a month to low-income housing areas, and delivers also to the Boys and Girls Club, Mercy House Together, and Garfield Elementary School. Finally, we offer residential Christ-centered drug and alcohol recovery, life transformation, to single women, women with children, as well as single men in two locations in Tumwater. Within reason, there is no time limit for recovery, but on average, the women spend two years and the men a year in recovery. And following graduation, we try and provide them with transitional housing opportunities as we pan. A common thread that runs through the lives that we are privileged to impact is profound childhood trauma and abuse, physical, emotional, and sexual. My three friends are living testimony to what God can achieve in the lives that seem irreversibly lost to homelessness and addiction. I'd like to lead off with someone who has spent six, seven years living on the streets, in the tunnels, in the woods, in Thurston County, before turning her life around, and then maybe me and Sharon can share with you as well. And I thought this was especially appropriate, given, you know, the impact and just the, just all the emphasis on homelessness, lady, to hear a little bit about their lives and what can happen.
Thank you. So state your name, and then try to keep around three minutes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Toni Thompson. I am currently a staff member and security at the Olympia Union Gospel Mission. I am an addict for over 18 years, and I entered their program in 2014. I've been on the streets since 2006, when I moved to Olympia, bouncing from home to home, drug house, to car, to doorways, in the tunnel downtown, under Sylvester Park. I almost died there. The mission has given me a new life. Going into their recovery program saved my life. I was going to kill myself at the point before I came in. I've had several things happen to me out there over the years, kidnapping, raping, a lot of things. And I was at my rock bottom when the mission took me in. And I have a job there now that is where my heart lies, is to be able to give back to the community where I came from, and to help the people that I know that are out there on the streets, that I used to get high with. Being there also keeps me clean and sober, because the people that come in that I see that I used to run with. And I'm also going back to school. I'm going to college to try and get my business associate. I am actually turning 44 today. And, thank you. And I've gotten back to being a part of a family again. I have a 25-year-old son, two grandchildren, a 14-year-old daughter that I haven't been in their lives for a long time. So all I know is the mission is a very, very good thing downtown. It's helping a lot of people in a lot of ways, and I'm living proof. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mia Pinto. I'm a recovering addict, but more importantly, I am also a mother, a daughter, and a friend. I'm a client of the Women's Life Transformation Program at Genesis Acres, and this is my story. I immigrated into the US at the age of 16 from India and quickly found myself in the bondage of addiction. I've been addicted to many different kinds of drugs and alcohol over the last 20 years. I've overdosed on drugs four times and have had many blackouts. I sustained various traumas of my own making and at the hands of others. There were several deaths in the family and physical and sexual abuses. My mother abandoned me and my brother when my parents split up at the age of five. And my grandmother and my father both died by the time I was 14. I grew up with a strong Catholic background, which entailed singing in the church choir and serving as an altar girl. However, after the death of my grandmother, I was mad at God and basically separated myself from Him and the church. With a cocky attitude, I did not hide my destructive lifestyle. I started using drugs and alcohol excessively at age 14, and by the time I was 18, I was selling them. As a result, I was in and out of jail for most of my adult life, and I've had several abusive relationships. One relationship, however, resulted in one of my best blessings ever, my son Xavier, who is six years old now. But unfortunately, my drug use and chaotic relationships and encounters with the law prompted CPS and Xavier's father to keep him from me. I had no contact with him for three years until I came to Genesis Acres. In 2017, I had hit rock bottom. I found myself homeless, unemployed, living in my car with no windows in the cold winter months. I realized that I was living as a slave to drugs, and that I no longer had any control over my life. The thought that came to mind was homelessness equals hopelessness. I realized I had to change something. That was when God began to speak to me. He told me He would not forsake me or leave me. Then I signed up with a rehabilitation facility in Yakima. While there, I heard about the women's program at Genesis Acres through the Olympia Union Gospel Mission. I called Jody Yarborough and was able to enter the program by mid-February of this year. Over there, I was taught a new method of coping, relying on God. I'm also learning about boundaries, how the brain develops, and how to retrain my mind. In addition to that, I'm learning how to live a clean and sober, Christ-centered life through Bible studies, recovery groups, and life-issue classes. Also, I have the honor of volunteering at the Mission Vision Clinic by utilizing my previous job skills as an optician. Today, my life looks different because I'm a new creation in Christ, and I now have regular visits with my son as a clean and sober mom with one year clean and sober time. When I see my son smiling with joy, I know God's grace is in full effect. In May this year, I will be graduating the program. Thank you.
Sharon Whitehill, and good evening. I'm a believer who struggles with addiction. I grew up in a safe and healthy environment with loving parents and siblings. My father was in the military, so he was gone quite often. And like many military families, we moved a lot. Therefore, I began struggling with loss and abandonment issues early. However, my cousins introduced me to alcohol at age 12, and it appeared to numb the pain from abandonment and give me a false sense of acceptance. Things did not get better, because by the time I was 14, I was being bullied at school, dealing with teenage emotions, and suicide. My family viewed crying and talking about feelings as a sign of weakness. So since I could not turn to them, I began using drugs and dropped out of high school. By age 20, I was using pain pills and got my GED and a job. At age 21, a life-changing event happened. My brother Michael got crushed by an excavator on the job site. He was my protector and also like a father figure in my life. This was a huge loss. I felt like not only had I lost my brother, but my mother also. She was so hurt and distanced from everyone. So once again, I became suicidal. At this time, I felt that God had abandoned me. Where was God? Why'd this happen? Psalm 34:18, "The Lord is close to the brokenhearted and saves those who are crushed in spirit." After this incident, you could only imagine, my addiction progressively got worse. Things did get better in 2008. I found out I was pregnant, and I had my daughter Micah on Christmas Day 2008. I stayed sober the whole pregnancy, but a few months after, I went back to use again. It got way worse. I got into heroin, I lost my job, my home, and eventually, my daughter. This was the first rock bottom. My second rock bottom was about a year and a half ago. I lost my best friend on July 31st. After treatment and detox seven times total, and being in and out of domestic violence relationships in which I almost died, I got free. Psalm 42, "He has lifted me out of the slimy pit, out of the muck and mire. He set my feet on a rock and gave me a firm place to stand." And that's exactly what he did. After treatment this time, I had no place to go but back to the streets. I was three months pregnant, and I called the Olympia Union Gospel Mission Women's Life Transformation Program, and was accepted into the program at Genesis Acres on January 12, 2017. By the grace of God and the help and support of the Union Gospel Mission, I've been clean 14 months and 17 days. On July 17th, I had my second ang- On July seventeenth, I had my second angel, Courtney. I got my nine-year-old placed with me permanently in June. So now I have both of my children, and I can be the sober mother I've always wanted to be. This program has given me hope, a new beginning, and confidence of who I am in Christ and how much He loves me. I've learned how to live free from addiction by attending the life-issue classes, recovery classes, that the program offers, and the love and godly care of both my counselors, Jody Yarborough and Lori Anderson. They've accepted me and loved me when I didn't believe I deserved the love. I never knew anyone could love somebody that was so bad before. I'm extremely blessed and thankful. I'm a new woman now. The old is gone and the new has come. I now got skills to deal with addiction without using. I can now have healthy relationships. I can also give back what I've been giving. I volunteer at the mission weekly and when they need me. If it weren't for this program, I probably have ended up in the obituary of the newspaper. So I give extra thanks and love to all of you who help and actually take the time to care about something that's hard to understand. Hope to see you at graduation in May. Thank you. Merry Christmas and a happy new year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So I'm really pleased that all of you could come and talk to us about the Gospel Mission, and thank you very much for being here. So what's up next is our referral from the Hearings Examiner, Woodland Church Conditional Use Permit. And Neil Tabitha, welcome. I understand you're new and something new before us.
Deputy Mayor.
If I may, there's a conflict of interest with my participation in this discussion and vote tonight, so I'd like to excuse myself for a little bit and be invited back when it's over.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor and council members. So I am here tonight to present a conditional use permit for Woodland Church to occupy a two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square foot space in the Washington Farm Bureau Building at nine seventy-five Carpenter Road Northeast. I brought a visual display here just to show from an aerial where roughly that is located. So as you can see, it is directly to the west of Carpenter Road and just a little bit south of Interstate Five. More broadly, you can see it is mostly surrounded by wooded area, lower-intensity uses, sand and gravel, as well as bordered by the interstate there, and that would be ninth lane northeast, directly south of the building there. The parcel is Zone Central Business District Six, a zoning district which allows for a variety of commercial, retail, and office uses as well as some higher-density residential uses. For this process, any membership organization, including a church, going into this zoning district requires a CUP or Conditional Use Permit be completed. The CUP is a quasi-judicial process that requires notification of surrounding property owners, posting on-site, and a public hearing with the Hearings Examiner. The CUP is used to mitigate any potential impacts from the use. The process is an avenue for surrounding property owners and citizens at large to voice concerns, thoughts on the project, and for the Hearings Examiner to incorporate that feedback into additional conditions with their interpretations and expertise. This use was originally brought to the city's attention after Woodland Church and the Washington State Farm Bureau had already executed a lease, and they had occupied the space, with neither party being aware at the time that a Conditional Use Permit or CUP was required. Since at that time, all parties involved have cooperated with the city and worked diligently to make sure that all requirements were fulfilled, the process was followed, and they returned to full compliance. So during the public hearing conducted on Monday, November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the building owner and church representative provided testimony to the Hearings Examiner. No public comment was given at that hearing, nor was any received prior. During the hearing itself, topics such as traffic, parking, and permitted uses were discussed for the site. As expressed in the staff report, the use was found to be compatible and complementary with the site and surrounding area. A few reasons for that, one being the peak hours of operation for the church fell on Sunday from nine a.m. to one p.m., a time when the space in that building is mostly unoccupied. And again, this is a relatively small percentage of the space in the building itself. It's a little under three thousand, whereas the building itself is forty-three thousand or so, again, about six percent of the space overall. So we found that parking would be readily available there. As you can see, there's about a hundred and sixty-six parking spaces there, of which the church even at its peak would likely not even take a third. It's also plausible that parishioners, after Sunday service, would be likely to frequent nearby restaurants, businesses around the Lacey area, so it would have that added benefit, otherwise not seen by that use. So specific conditions were applied to the permit requiring further review that if any intensifications, such as a daycare operation or other major uses of the church, were to occur, that would reopen it for future land use processes, and that was incorporated into the suggested conditions by the Hearings Examiner. The applicant stated there were no plans to include childcare or any immediate intensification of operations at this time as well. And even with the anticipated growth provided in the narrative by the applicant, there saw no reason that this would be too intensive a use for the space or surpass the facilities available at that time. So the Hearings Examiner has recommended approval of the Conditional Use Permit with the conditions of approval attached, primarily relating to additional land use processes if there were any intensification of the use going forward. So we requested the council approve the CUP subject to the conditions, findings, effects, and conclusions of law specified by the Hearings Examiner's report dated December fifth, two thousand and eighteen. And I want to thank all you for your time and be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Move to approve the Conditional Use Permit application for restoration church, case number eighteen-seven-nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. So this is a tent. Is that what I read correctly, or is it inside the building?
This is inside a space within the building.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I wasn't sure. That's why I read the whole document and I thought it mentioned a tent, so that makes me feel a lot better about this.
Okay, yeah, there is actually a floor plan included in the exhibits, too, if you'd like.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Yeah, I'm just curious. This really probably isn't for you, it's probably more for Scott. Why do we have to go through a Conditional Use Permit application process for churches on a regular basis? Why are they not permitted uses in all zones?
I have to back me up, but we, for every religious institution, it goes through a Conditional Use Process because there's no outright zoning for religious institutions, so it always goes back before the Hearings Examiner and council.
Can that be changed? I mean, can we change that to where they're allowed in all zones so that they don't have to go through this process?
There is actually, the way our zoning code is structured, there is a zone that they are allowed in without a Conditional Use Permit. That's the open spaces institutional, same as any public properties for nonprofits, churches, schools, et cetera. The reason why the churches, generally, and other zones go through Conditional Use Permit is to look at the unique dynamics of a church, the activities, and to see if they're compatible with surrounding neighborhoods, and that gives the opportunity to give site-specific conditions for them to locate, especially in commercial properties as well. It also gives them more flexibility because then you can look at residential zones, if it's applicable or appropriate, or commercial zones, industrial zones, and we have them located in various places that were site-specifically appropriate, but the zoning may not be allowed, so it does give a little bit more flexibility. We could always look into updating our zoning codes to look at areas that may be, in addition to open spaces institutional, that they should be able to locate into, but that would be something to be referred to the Planning Commission and our long-range planning staff to take a look at and see how that can best be structured.
I would think it might be worth taking a look at because we've had several of these for churches, and I don't believe we've ever not approved one, so it just seems like maybe it's an added burden on the church without any really good reason.
There is also a criteria we look at, too, especially in commercial and industrial, how compatible to those zones and tenanted zones, you know, with schools, religious organizations, state offices are another one that require Conditional Use Permit in commercial zones just because they don't necessarily meet the objective of commercial, they're producing revenue for the city as well as commerce and services. And that's one of the reasons. And so when we look at, there are some instances where they don't even get to the application stage because they don't meet some of those criteria, and that's sorted out at the pre-sub stage. So it's kind of that step four.
Thank you.
I would think that there might be some concerns about traffic at times. I don't know that, but particularly if they have something that happens not on Sunday, kind of a thing, but I don't know that.
And the other part of it, too, is a lot of times we're looking at either new construction or new site development, and when we have a situation like this where they're taking a tenant space within a building, it's not taking the entire building, that's a different dynamic than, say, a church locating or taking down a large office building or a commercial building for only use as a church and it's not used throughout the rest of the week for other things. So there's other those issues of consideration, and then when you get closer to residential areas, then the traffic load is a peak demands in those neighborhoods on weekends as well.
Councilmember Stedman.
I recall within the last couple of years, we took an open space institutional and changed its use to housing. I want to say over off of Thirty-first Avenue. Isn't that correct? Off of Willamette and Northeast Lacey, we changed the open space institutional to residential four to eight or something.
That was a business park zone that was redesignated to industrial and residential.
Supposed to be a church, right? A site for a church, I believe. I don't remember the address.
Yes, yes. It was, yeah, you're correct. Just north of Orion. It was backed up to the industrial area, and that was designated for a church to the Meridian Campus Master Plan, but the market wasn't there for a church to take down that entire property, so that was re-designated to Lodencity Three to Six and now has a residential neighborhood built in there.
So that's good. I mean, it goes both ways, so.
So this is a discussion we want to bring up at the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, just as a general conversation. I think it is difficult to try to pre-select where religious institutions are going to be throughout the city, and I think the Conditional Use Process allows, you know, where the congregation or where they think they're going to find property. And I think it's a difficult zoning, but maybe it's a discussion point.
That makes good sense. I'm good with that.
And we've seen two instances or two organizations tonight that do wonderful things in the community and that happen to be open space institutional.
Well, and I think it's also need to look at the Conditional Use Permit chapter, LMC sixteen-six-six as its whole, because there's a whole list of items in there that are listed as Conditional Use Permits that don't really fit into your standard permitted or prohibited uses because they're necessary or needed in the community, and it gives them that bridge to locate in areas and be able to offset those unique impacts. So schools are another one if they're not in the WCI. There's other aspects to that that's in that whole chapter that is to address these type of issues that are necessary for our community.
So is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed. And may we take just like a two-minute recess while someone goes and gets Councilmember Hearn. Okay, he's back. Thank you. It won't be two minutes. It'll be thirty seconds. So, okay. So next up is our Budget Ordinance, and is it Troy? Who's?
Actually, I was gonna pinch-hit tonight for that one, yes. Although I do want to recognize Chrissy Wolf. Christie is instrumental in developing the budget. She's our financial services manager and knows the numbers behind the numbers, so we rely greatly on her. So I appreciate her being tonight in case I stumble. So tonight is really the final act for the two thousand and nineteen budget. We have an ordinance before you. The total budget is a hundred and forty-two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. The general fund of the, sort of the service that we all think of when we think of police and streets and parks is just under fifty million at forty-nine million, five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. We provided a presentation back in October to the city council. We provided a public revenue hearing in November first, and we had two subsequent public hearings on the budget and received input. We've also noted in the staff report that we've included five thousand dollars for our youth council. We made a slight adjustment related to a labor issue within RAC, which equates to about a ninety-seven thousand dollar impact into the budget. And then we've also added fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars to recognize the refund levy calculation change when we gave you that first presentation, as well as adjustments to new construction. The ordinance includes the twenty-nine funds that the city of Lacey is responsible for. That covers the general fund. It covers our debt, capital projects, our special funds, our internal service funds, as well as our utility funds. You also notice that we include a joint animal services budget at two million, seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-five, since we're the fiscal agent for our partners. So the ordinance before you is one-five-three-seven. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Chrissy Wolf would also be happy to back me up on the budget.
So may we have a motion first before we have a discussion?
Move to adopt the two thousand and nineteen budget ordinance setting the total budget in the amount of one hundred and forty-two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and five, and the general fund total budget in the amount of forty-nine million, five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think after.
Councilmember Hearn.
So first of all, as a point of reference in history, we had a discussion about the one percent property tax, and we debated that extensively at work session and also at council, and I voted for that. And then I'd just been looking at it and studying it and studying and looking at it, and I know someone in town, to be anonymous, who owns some rental properties in Lacey. And this individual rents is a shared-home situation where most of the tenants are lower income. And so when you take the one percent, you know, it equals about between two and twenty-five hundred dollars for the one percent tax. And so, you know, that's a month's worth of rent to this individual, which really puts a lot of pressure on the tenants and increasing rents. And this is a really hard time for renters, and it's an extremely hard time for low-income renters in face of the way housing is and our housing crisis and our homeless problem. My personal experience in the real estate industry, too, has noticed quite a few rentals, and it was mentioned, I think, by Councilmember Greenstein, number rentals selling off this year because owners say, you know, I can't, I can't keep up with the expenses of the taxes and then keeping the rents, so we'll sell. And prices are higher, and taxes are higher, that one percent, because that one percent is related to the value of the house. So and then looking at the budget, you know, it's a good budget. We vetted it extensively. But I still see that we don't have a substantial need. We don't need one, but I don't see that we have a substantial need for that one percent, and I think it would be an appropriate time to not have that tax. So I'm gonna just be the mean guy at night. I'm just gonna ask if the council would please consider a motion to approve this budget, or first of all, consider a motion to overturn the vote to add a one percent tax to property in Lacey this year and approve this budget as amended without that.
Maybe a point of clarification. So back in November, we passed the ad valorem tax increase. So that issue, we did debate and discuss, and that was actually approved. So that now is currently, that decision is embedded in the current budget.
Point of clarification, please. The one percent adds up completely total to sixty-five thousand dollars, right? Plus or minus a couple thousand?
Sixty-eight thousand.
So it's hard for me to believe that one citizen is gonna pay twenty-five hundred dollars, just, you know, do the math.
Property owner.
You know, we have fifty thousand people and even less property owners. But regardless, this is a good budget. It's been vetted, you know. I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the approval of it.
So I would like, council, we have already approved the one percent and passed it. Is that correct?
Correct. Council took two actions in November. They took an action.
They took an action adopting a resolution declaring that council was going to increase the property tax by that 1% and then they adopted an ordinance setting that tax and those were both done at the same council meeting in mid-November.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Should I not receive a second? Then I will support this budget because of the hard work that the council's put in.
So, there is a motion on the floor, I have not heard a second. Is there a second to take up an amendment that amends this budget ordinance?
I would like to comment.
Well, I'm waiting for a second. I don't hear a second, so the amended motion dies on the floor. Okay, so.
I want to discuss one thing about this further is many, all of us on this council share much of your concerns with that particular issue, the 1%. Having said that, I still support this budget.
Okay, so because we've had this, did we have a motion and a second for the buzz?
There is a motion on the floor.
That's what I thought.
I have one more quick comment.
Okay, one more.
I just wanted to apologize to the council for not, for having to bring this up, but I just felt strongly about it and felt I needed to. And again, I'll be supporting this budget as proposed in favor of the hard work and vetting that the council's done.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the ordinance number 1537? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the 2019 budget ordinance setting the total budget in the amount of $142,235,705 and the general fund total budget in the amount of $49,511,784, ordinance number 1537. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passed, we have a budget ordinance, thank you. So next, next up is the mayor's report. First up is Thurston Community Media Services Contract and Steve Kirkman.
Good evening, deputy mayor and council. Before you this evening is a proposed MOU to extend the city's operating agreement with Thurston Community Media by one additional year. In January of 2014, the city entered into a three-year operating agreement that had two one-year options. We exercised a second one-year option probably a year ago tonight, so that will be expiring here in a couple of days and TCTV media has requested that we add one additional one-year option to the agreement. The agreement allows that type of modification. Staff agree that it would be beneficial to the city's interest to make such an adjustment and we went to the general government and public safety committee on December the 11th. The committee has recommended that the full council approved, approved the MOU and so I think I'll just pause there and respond to any questions or.
I would make a motion to prove memorandum of understanding and authorize the city manager to approve a one-year extension of the city of Lacey operating agreement with TCTV.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Is there any discussion, councilmember?
I have one quick question. Why do we do, why do we stick with one-year agreements rather than just doing a longer agreement instead of coming back every year with it?
That's, that's a good question. So, so especially in prior decades, that would have been an even more pertinent question. Now, the, the industry and the technology and as you know, cable franchising and everything else is changing so rapidly, it does give us an opportunity to respond or react to those types of changes if there's one that we feel is necessary.
Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. So I made the motion, obviously, so I support this, but, and I support an additional one-year extension as well. Having said that, being a commerce person on the board and a business person myself, I think in a year or in the next two years, if we exercise next year's option, it gives us a good opportunity to discuss, maybe looking at, you know, maybe Facebook Live might be an additional tool that could, you know, possibly, you know, be in the discussion or marketing, media marketing solutions or some other private entity like Party to Productions. I'm private sector and, you know, there's the argument, you know, can government do as good a job as private sector, vice versa? I'm not, you know, trying to bring up that debate or not, but it's something to definitely look at, even though I love TCTV, so, and I support it 100%. I made the motion, so.
Councilmember Hearn.
More clarification, isn't, isn't this service, for the most part, supplied by the cable company as a, as a result of the agreement that we have with them?
Right, in the staff report, you'll see about $105,000, so that's actually probably about 15% of the franchise fees that we collect from Comcast, yeah.
Okay, and also in the last year or two, they've upgraded to more cameras, to remote and also HGTV.
Right, and that's actually a separate item, that's called the PEG fee, but that's exactly right, yeah, we just did digital cameras last year.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve memorandum of understanding and authorize the city manager to approve a one-year extension of the city of Lacey operating agreement with TCTV. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
So next up for the city manager's report is approval to award bid for the Union Mills Reservoir Seismic Upgrade and Overflow Drain Project and it's gonna be Jason Kashani? Kashani, I knew I said it wrong. Welcome, this is your first chance to get in front of us. Not to put you on the spot.
Lucky dog.
Good evening, honorable deputy mayor and city council. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Jason Kashani. I am currently the newest utility engineer in the Water Resources Department and just celebrated my one-year anniversary with the city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Staff recommends to award Lacey contract number PW 2018-12 to low bidder BPCI Earthworks LLC from Pialp, Washington in the amount of $1,101,232.40. We had 12 bidders on this project and we have allotted 80 working days and intend to start at the beginning of February. So the Union Mills Reservoir is one of currently seven reservoirs owned and operated by the city. It's located in Lacey's urban growth area, it was built in 1969, at which time there were no requirements or guidelines on seismic design for water reservoirs. This project will bring the reservoir up to current standards, protecting our assets and surrounding community while providing a storm system to drain the tank as well as protect the immediate surroundings in the event of an overflow. So you can see there, the starage basically represents the actual site and the red outline actually shows the area where we are going to be installing, constructing a storm system to take care of the overflow and be able to drain the tank. Because currently, right now, there is a drain, but it's excessive, requires excessive man-hours from our maintenance, operations and maintenance division to actually connect and run a hose all the way down to Thurston County Storm Pond. So this will allow us to just drain the tank without having those man-hours involved. And so the overflow drain, as well as the seismic upgrades, just got a little exhibit here to show what the seismic upgrades include. We are, we are, we are constructing a reinforced concrete foundation expansion along with anchor chairs that are welded to the tank and anchor bolts anchoring it down to the reservoir expanded foundation. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
So may I have a motion first before we discuss this?
Move to award Lacey contract number PW 2018-12 to low bidder BPCI Earthworks LLC from Pialp, Washington in the amount of $1,101,232.40.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
How big is the reservoir?
The reservoir is actually 2 million gallons.
This is just a minor question, but because this goes into the county and stuff, do you work with them or is it just totally taken care of by Lacey or does Thurston County get involved?
Yeah, actually, we had to get permits from the county. We had to obtain a building permit for the structure and also we got a encroachment permit from them to do the work in the right way. The storm system becomes county-owned once it leaves our property and they, they will maintain it at that point.
Okay, that's good to know. So councilmember Hearn.
It's good to see seismic considered. Alaska recently had a very large earthquake and clearly we're in the range, if we're now to now and next 500 years, but we really need to pay attention to it and it's good to see.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
No, we're getting ready to do the same thing at the reservoir up in Hawks Prairie, correct? They're not gonna run concurrent, right? That's also a seismic upgrade project, right?
The Hawks Prairie is not a seismic upgrade, it meets all current codes. We have rusting going on inside of that reservoir and we're gonna have to drain it, do structural upgrades, but not seismic related.
And we're building a, one next to it, 1 million gallon.
Correct, so that, then we'll have the storage capacity, capacity that we need while the Hawks Prairie tank is offline.
Now, are they gonna be under construction at the same time?
No, they will not.
Okay.
So is there any more discussion? Seeing none?
I have one audible here.
Oh, okay.
If you look at the bid tab, the number is $1,101,181.56. That number differs from recommendation. I believe the bid tab is what we need.
The number on the staff report is correct. I'm looking at two different documents online that are online, so.
The current bid tab actually agrees with the staff report.
Yeah, the staff report number is the correct number.
Oh, okay.
So the number I put in my motion is correct then?
Yes.
Oh, good. We don't have to correct that.
Trust me, you can take that to the bank.
It's only like 50 bucks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, folks, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carried. So up next up is the state plan of operation, detective Ford. Well, actually interim deputy.
It changes about every month.
I know.
Well, thank you, deputy mayor Pratt and council. On January 19th of this year, the Lacey Police Department entered into an agreement with the Washington State Coordinator of the State Plan of Operation Program. The program's purpose is to allow full-time and part-time law enforcement officers to procure excess military equipment items that are applicable to civilian law enforcement at the cost of 900 per year. At its December 11th meeting, general government and public safety committee reviewed the state plan and the Lacey Police Department and recommended approval by the full council. To date, we have procured approximately 24 items over the last year. If you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them.
So may I have a motion before we have questions?
I'd let someone else make one. Move to approve agreement for enrollment in the state plan of operation and authorize city manager to sign the document.
Second. It's been moved and seconded? Yay. So is there any discussion? So, did you have a question?
I'm trying to find my notes here.
Actually, this is very similar to all the other equipment lists that we've had in the past, correct, for the last few years, two years?
Actually, we've only been involved in this for one year. The only things that we procured are three sites for less lethal weapons and ammo boxes.
Oh, okay.
I was just looking under Article 14, the costs and fees and it states all costs associated with the transportation, turn-in, transfer, repair, maintenance, insurance, disposal, repossession and other, or other expenses related to property obtained through the LESO program is the sole responsibility of the state and/or LEA. I don't know what kind of, it's, I don't know if there's any real liability there for us or not, but it's probably important to ask that question.
I think we're responsible for the items, maintaining a record of what we have and maintain. I believe we do have to pay shipment, but if you, if you read the, the whole purpose of this, I mean, you can get everything from former military vehicles, that's something we're not gonna be doing. We're looking at more of the, the laser sites and things like that that are extremely expensive. So when we can get those, we'll do it.
Okay. I just wanted to add a, a second thing, that there's, there's agreements that could be made with also with private entities too, like a local gun dealer that can do the same thing, but I fully support this, so.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Not seeing any more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carried. So the next up is Martinway Corridor Study ILA, Rick Walk.
Good evening, deputy mayor and city council. Yes, before you tonight is a request to make a motion to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Lacey, city of Olympia, Thurston County, intercity transit and the Thurston Regional Planning Council to conduct the Martinway Corridor Study and also to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. And this interlocal agreement is born of a partnership and effort to look at the Martinway Corridor, approximately a seven and a half mile corridor from Pacific all the way out to Marvin Road and for general orientation from basically where Ralph's Thriftway is in Olympia, all the way along Martinway to Galax, or Marvin Road in Lacey. And of course, with that, the desire to look at that, this is born out of the urban corridors task force recommendation that was adopted about several years ago to look at facilitating reinvestment in that corridor and also mixed use and transit services. The, the partnership put in a grant application with the federal surface transportation, or actually it was awarded grant funds from the federal surface transportation block grant and those grant funds, along with contributions from all the partners, total a project of about $525,000. And with that, the effort will be to hire Thurston Regional Planning Council to conduct the planning study and with the effort to hire sub consultants to look at economics as well as safety and mobility. The specific focus of the grant will be looking at bicycle ped facilities, safety, increased transit or rapid transit type concepts, the land use, access management along the corridor and also neighborhood connectivity into the neighborhoods that border the corridor along a stretch. And again, the, the other part of this will be an effort to form a steering committee made up of jurisdictional staff from the partners, partnership and amongst that would not only be long-range planning staff, but also current planning staff and transportation staff to work through these issues to make sure we have continuity from, you know, developing the vision down into the implementation of current planning. Another positive aspect of this study is it does, is in line with the planning commission work program with joint planning with Thurston County. 1.4 mile stretch of this corridor is the portion between carp- Uh, one point four mile stretch of this, uh, corridor is the, uh, portion between Carpenter Road and Galaxy Drive, the county portion of Martin Way. And that is a, a portion of, of the Martin Way Corridor that, uh, the city's always been interested in working with the county on updating, uh, regulations and looking at opportunities when they're, with their, as well as, uh, doing that in a joint planning effort. So this will bring that together and achieve that goal of our work program. Uh, the project is intended to start, uh, roughly mid, uh, two thousand and nineteen. It's anticipated to be about two to three-year project that would, um, conclude in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Once it goes through the study and, and public outreach phase and recommendations, then it'll go through the respective jurisdictions, uh, planning commissions for review and adoption and incorporation into the, the city's plan. With that, I entertain any questions the council may have.
So please, let's have a motion first and then we'll have a discussion.
Okay. I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Lacey, City of Olympia, Thurston County, Inter-City Transit, and Thurston Regional Planning Council to conduct the Martin Way Corridor Study and authorize city manager to sign the document.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and now discussion. Um, Councilmember, um, Greenstein.
So I'm, I'm going to support this primarily because there's no cash outlay. This seems to me to be a duplication, unless I'm missing something, of the work that was done on the urban corridor study, which personally I wasn't particularly pleased with the outcome of that. I don't think it was well done at all. Um, and I'm just not sure that I see where this is anything more than a duplication of what we've already done.
It's, um, going to be a, a more detailed study of that corridor because with the urban corridor task force, it looked all the way from Tomwater down Capitol Boulevard to, um, Capitol and, and State and then out east of Lacey. And the, the task force was, um, um, took, uh, a review of that corridor and all the various potential of it and then developed some recommendations to follow. And there's several different way, then there were weighted from low hanging fruit to medium to heavy lift type recommendations and actions. What this effort will do will actually take a, a more focused look of a segment of that corridor and, um, look at the, um, how, how the, uh, traffic flow goes along it, how transit is served, and then, uh, also doing interviews and specific outreach to the businesses along that corridor to see what their current, uh, issues are and see if there's some opportunities there as well. So while it builds upon the urban corridor task for, I would say it makes a finer grain look and it will, um, be a more intensive effort along that stretch.
It just seems to me that we've spent a lot of money on consultants on this pro- on that original project and got nothing out of it. I, I'm not seeing anything that came out of that project. And most of what you're just mentioning even is stuff that was supposed to have been studied in that and we spent money on that one. Uh, to me, just find this, again, I'm going to support it only because we're not spending any money. If this had a, even a one dollar price tag on it, it would not get my support.
Well, and, and, oh, sorry.
I, I have to concur with Councilmember Greenstein. Um, but the difference between him and I is I'm not going to vote for this. Um, due to personal, private business and public experiences dealing solely with the county in that one point four mile stretch, I ha- I don't have much confidence in, uh, in, in anything in the, in that process, let alone another second study. I certainly hope for the, the business owners, especially out there, me being one, it, it helps the situation in regards to the county. Um, but for that, I will be voting no.
So Councilmember Hearn.
So this is a, uh, historical, uh, opportunity being that this corridor, you know, is sandwiched between Lacey and Lacey. And, uh, whereas a lot of commuter traffic goes, hits the freeway, um, and to the dismay I know of, uh, the DOT, it, it, more of it could go through Martin Way and it could be a real economic boon. So, um, I'll support this, um, study and, uh, I do know and trust that Rick will be thinking about Lacey and, uh, commerce and economic development as, as you do so well in, in all the other communities.
So here's, uh, my take on it. You know, um, I don't think that other study went far enough and it was broader, but also that corridor, even though it probably won't happen tomorrow or the next day, is ripe for having, um, uh, some kind of, uh, rapid transit more than just buses. And I, I just would hope that we would have the foresight of, of looking at that because I think it would benefit both cities and counties. So I've certainly supported. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to also just touch upon the, uh, the financial contributions or, uh, between the partners and, and the City of Lacey. And, and the council's correct, the City of Lacey is not putting any cash match into this project. Mainly, the reason was when we looked, started talking about the interlocal agreement, you have a large portion that was primary Olympia's portion of, of the Martin Way Corridor. And then the one and a half mile stretch, that's the county portion. And the city's portion is roughly from, um, College Street to Carpenter Road. It's either built out with commer- or, yeah, built out with commercial or is, uh, the Woodland Creek Wetland Complex on my St. Martin. So there, the land use there was not a very area that we wouldn't have a lot of look at, but really wanted to participate in this as in-kind staff time. So that's what we are contributing to this as matches in-kind staff time to participate in that so that we can have, work with, uh, the, uh, the group and this, and the, in this effort to look at the zoning and land use dynamics along that county portion that's in our unincorporated growth area and see if we can get some consistent zoning and updated zoning along that stretch.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Yeah, I just say, and, and that, that I fully support. I would not want this to happen without participation of, of Lacey staff, uh, because I think our interests are obviously affected. I think we need representatives from Lacey in the discussion, particularly on that portion that is county, because it is our urban growth area and it will eventually be Lacey. So that, that's the reason I will support it. I, I, I'm glad to see you're going to be involved.
So if there is no more discussion, we have a motion on the floor to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Lacey, City of Olympia, Thurston County, Inter-City Transit, and Thurston Regional Planning Council to conduct, uh, the Martin Way Corridor Study and authorize city manager to sign the document. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
It's been passed, six to one.
Five to one.
Five to one. What?
Five to one.
Five to one. Um, okay, so that's right. Um, so, uh, next up is, um, Thurston County Mullen Road Reconstruction Project.
So, uh, good evening, Honorable Deputy Mayor and Council. So staff recommends authorizing the city manager to sign quick claim deed and documents necessary to transfer City of Lacey-owned property to Thurston County for right of way that's needed for the Mullen Road Construction Project. Uh, the slide there is a screenshot I took today from Thurston County's website that describes the project. It runs from the city limits, which is near the fire station on Mullen Road to Carpenter Road where there will be a, a roundabout installed. Uh, project budget for them is about eight million dollars. There will be, you know, it's currently a two-lane road, uh, no sidewalks. It will become a, basically a three-lane road with sidewalks and other improvements. Uh, just a little bit about the specific property. So we do own, you know, that photo there is showing the Mullen Road from the high school through the city limits and then on to the east beyond Carpenter Road. So we own a large piece of property, which is mainly wetlands on the north side of Mullen Road that's just to the east of the fire station. And then if you go out near Carpenter Road, you'll see another piece of property that's highlighted in yellow that we purchased specifically for the construction, the roundabout at that location. The specific piece of property that we are, uh, going to quick claim deed to Thurston County is the area that's highlighted in red there. It's about six hundred and seventy feet long, uh, averages about thirty feet wide and it's, it's about a total half acre in area. Uh, so just a, a little different perspective on that. This map shows you what areas in Thurston County and what areas in the City of Lacey. So, uh, as you can see, that Lacey-owned property is surrounded by Thurston County. And then if you go out to Carpenter Road, the area highlighted in yellow that we purchased is actually in the City of Lacey. But what we are requesting tonight is to sign documents that would transfer that sliver of property adjacent to Mullen Road to Thurston County, and that's highlighted in red there. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
So may I have a motion first before we have discussion?
Move to approve transfer of city property to Thurston County for the Mullen Road Reconstruction Project and authorize city manager to sign ROW dedication documents.
But it's been moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any discussions? Uh, Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. I, I hate to be, um, slightly negative towards, uh, the county, uh, tonight, but I would suggest that they, um, quick deed us, the, their property and the eight million dollars and we do the project and do it right.
Hmm. So, um.
Be voting no for this.
Okay. So is there any other discussion?
I didn't realize that we needed a roundabout there. Is it, did they specify the need for that?
The, the location of the roundabout is at Carpenter Road and Mullen. And we've had that in our comp plan for years. And that location is both in the county and in the city. So, um, you know, as part of the project, the county will build that roundabout there at Carpenter and Mullen. The area that's highlighted in red is just a, a widening portion of the, of the roadway, if that helps clarify.
No, I just used to go that way every day and it just seemed like there wasn't a reason that needed a roundabout, I guess, but.
Yeah, the, at the intersection of Carpenter and Mullen, uh, just that T intersection, the roundabout will help improve traffic flow at that intersection. And, and a roundabout is more efficient than a, than a signal and safer than a signal. So it is the.
That's what I heard.
The optimum traffic control device for that location.
Okay.
In the recent past, the, that T intersection is difficult, especially if you're trying to take a left turn on Mullen Road going eastbound, um, especially during peak time.
Oh, I was always going right. That's why. I'm like, I like.
Just the flow of traffic. So that traffic control device is why that's been identified.
I know honestly, like, the roundabouts on Yelm Highway, they, it causes really bad traffic jams every day almost. So that's my only con- concern would be that it actually makes traffic worse, but the experts say otherwise.
Councilmember Stedman.
Uh, I actually think roundabouts work, but, you know, again, I have very little confidence in county and city, uh, mutual dealings with projects in general, and that's why I'm not supporting it.
So Councilmember Hearn.
Just thanks for pointing out that that red line is not the roundabout.
Yeah. Well, that makes it a little harder.
Some people have a different view of rounds.
That's true. Okay, we're getting tired here, I think. So, um, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
It's been, uh, moved and seconded, five to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And passed. Um, so, um, now on our, um, E agenda, um, the, there's no standing general committees to report out. So we're going to move on to boards and commissions and committee reports. Um, the mayor, um, Mayor Ryder is not here, uh, today, obviously. And so, um, next up is myself. And the only thing I have to report on, um, is, uh, Lot Clean Water Alliance. The Olympia Region Clean Air Agency does not have a meeting in December. So, um, our business meeting started at five thirty because we had an ex- executive session, uh, to review the executive director, director's annual performance review, uh, right after our business meeting. Uh, at our business meeting, we passed the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four strategic plan. Uh, the board was, um, the board was updated on Lot's wellness program and the annual performance reports were given on the engineering division and operations, entering, I'm sorry, engineering division and operations and facility division and also the senior leadership team. And after a journey for one hour to review the executive director's performance and look at his pay scale, the board, uh, returned to our business meeting. Um, the director's COLA was removed about six years ago. So as a consequence, the lead engineering staff has compressed the pay schedule between them and the director and their, uh, with their salary. So as a result, the, uh, board reestablished the director's COLA. And that is my report. Next up is Councilmember, uh, Young. Do you have a report?
Oh, yes, I do. Um, I only have a report on Thurston Thrives because the CIP and the EDC did not meet for December. Um, so Thurston Thrives had a social, which was fun. We got to, um, actually get a basically like community, um, annual report on what Thurston Thrives has done for the year. So every action team reported. And I won't get into like too much detail because there's a lot, but I'm just going to summarize it for you guys. Um, Thurston Thrives did pick three focus areas to work on for the next few years, and that is education, housing, stability, and economic opportunity. And so, um, the action team for housing and homelessness reported that in twenty eighteen, things that they've done that they're proud of is completed the state mandated five-year plan to end homelessness. They built and expanded an efficient coordinated entry system. And they formulated the hazardous, hazardous weather task force and hosted the regional housing summit where some of us were at. Um, the education and resilience team consists of the community schools initiative, uh, led by Together. And they were proud to have expanded not only to the Tomwater School District, but also to Yelm and Rochester. The food action team hosted a biannual food summit and that had over two hundred and fifty attendees. And then, um, some other work that they did this year was assessing the feasibility of a food processing facility in our region. The environment action team informed the update to the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan and the development of the region's climate, climate adaptation plan. And then the economy community action team basically partnered with the Thurston Economic Development Council this year. And working with over a hundred community partners, they implemented the first ever Thurston Economic Development Strategic Plan. The community design plan entered a national competition with the project Active Design for a Healthier Thurston County in which they sought support for a trail analysis and improvements to make it easier for residents to use the regional trail system. And in twenty sixteen, they were a finalist and received seed money to begin that work. And lastly, the public safety and justice team, um, led by the prosecuting, prosecuting attorney's office, um, they implemented first look differential case management. And this is, um, basically first look triages court cases to find the best path for a case as early as possible in order for the court to operate more efficiently. Some cases go into a diversion program, other cases go into a drug court, while others are criminal cases. First look reduces case time and resources and reduces recidivism. And it's especially effective when applied to lower level offenses and offenders with low-level mental illness. So Thurston Thrives as a whole has been working really well in our own little sectors of it. And I'm looking forward to what twenty nineteen holds. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you. So I'm going to report actually on two meetings, but both are, uh, part of Emergency Medical Services. So I, in addition to sitting on the board for EMS, I also sit on the Comprehensive Planning Committee. The Comprehensive Planning Committee met on December twelfth. We have now, um, we have our vision and mission statements done. We have the scope of work completed and we actually have started working on the goals and the objectives now. Uh, the plan is to have that document completed by September of twenty nineteen. So it's a long-term project that I'll report out on as things happen. Um, yet on the nineteenth, yesterday, we had an EMS, uh, board meeting where we also reported out on what the Comprehensive Planning Committee is doing so we could get the buy-in of the board that they're on board and, and we're going in the direction they want us to go. So that was a, a good start for that process. Um, in addition to that, couple of things, um, of interest. One is that we are actually starting to have issues with space at Providence. So we're actually running into situations where Providence cannot take patients, that they're full. their full.
Wow.
We actually had a heart patient have to be taken all the way to Seattle to find the closest bed. There was nothing between here and there available. So it's becoming a real concern that we don't have enough hospital beds in our community. You know, two big things, the problem is that we're already there and we have, obviously we're expecting over 100,000 more people in this area over the next 10, 15 years with no plans for building any additional hospital space. Providence right now is spending a lot of their time, energy, and money on actually purchasing medical facilities other than hospitals, so purchasing doctors' offices and not just around here, but all over the country. That's kind of what's happening. Hospitals are purchasing medical practices, kind of changing the way, the big picture of how medicine's handled, but it's, it's a serious concern because having to take someone all the way to Seattle as a heart patient, that's a little scary. So that's going to only get worse, it looks like at the moment. So I'll keep you updated as we hear more. Another thing going on that's, could become a concern, we don't know that it will, we hope that it won't, but AMR, which is a private ambulance company, has actually announced that they are going on strike in Seattle. Should not directly affect us. We're told that AMR here locally is not going on strike, but the Seattle, they do all of the basic life support transports for Seattle. So they, Seattle has notified everyone that they may need help. We assume and we hope there's enough help in the King County area, basically, but you know, it just, it's something to be aware of because it could, it could come to us in the sense of they may need help from this far away.
Wow.
We don't necessarily anticipate it, but they're going on strike, I believe it is, and it's in the, it's this weekend that the strike starts. So I mean, it's just in a couple of days, so just something to be aware of. And I believe that is all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. So next up is Councilmember Hearn.
Councilmember Greenstein, I, obviously it's not, but I would think that, you know, ambulance is going on a strike might, might, shouldn't be legal. I mean, there should be other alternatives to labor negotiations.
They are a private company. They are not a government entity in any way. So although public employees, there are certain restrictions on striking, they are a private company.
So the report that I have tonight is for Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. A year ago, we had a very successful community conversations over in Tumwater at the ESD 113, and that was in January of this year. Next January, which is about a month from now, on the 31st, we'll be hosting what we expect to be another successful gathering, but this one's called a partnering conversation. The community is certainly invited, but we're working hard to recruit key contacts in the area and have more of a, of a conversation workshop for ideas and solutions and strategies as opposed to the presentations that were there last year. So we'll be reaching out to key contacts in the area for the Partnering Conversation hosted by Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. And that'll be Thursday, January 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the ESD 113 in Tumwater. And RSVPs need to be made to tccat-partneringconversationeventbrite.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, let's see, Councilmember Stedman.
Well, all my committees meet in the first week of January. I have no report.
Okay, Councilmember Cox.
All righty. Reports on two. Community Action Council met early this month and wrapped up a year of providing essential social services to residents of Thurston, Mason, and Lewis Counties. Some of these services, for those who may not be familiar with the Community Action Council, include the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, weatherization, food stamps, and the Essential Monarch Children's Justice Center, which helps abused children who are already very damaged through the tortures of the criminal justice system. It tries to make, make things a little easier on these kids. It's, it's quite a wonderful program. Inter-City Transit had their annual holiday banquet this past Friday, and it's been a long time since I got to sit on Santa Stee. It was fun. And they have a lot of talented employees there. We got serenaded and it was, it was a good time. And it was, it was really remarkable to me to see how many people, former employees and retirees showed up for this thing. It's quite a family operation there. And then Thurston Regional Planning Council met and we did a number of actions. We approved the work program for 2019. We approved a new pay and job classification program, which essentially stripped out the first two levels of pay, and we ended up with, yeah, a 12 thing shrunk to 10. We adopted the 2019 Human Services Coordinated Transportation Plan Prioritized List. We reviewed priorities for the upcoming legislative session, and then we had a lot of fun playing Who Wants to be a Millionaire style game about the 2018 profile, Thurston Profile, which is a compilation of statistics about our region. And so we had to do like Who Wants to be a Millionaire? And we had lifelines and we had two, two big teams and our team won. So we knew a little bit more about Thurston, but it was a good meeting, one of the better ones I've been to. That's my report.
Thank you. I always do poorly on those profile things, no matter how hard I try. So that wraps it up. This is probably the last meeting for the year, and so were you going to say additional?
Well, I was just going to say that we do have a, 27th of December would be a regular council meeting, but given the holidays, we will not have that meeting. And if you recall, council made an amendment to the ordinance last year, so we'll have our first regular meeting January 3rd. So that's new for 2019. So January 3rd, we'll have a regular council meeting.
Okay. And so with that, I would like to wish all of you, the audience out there and in here, happy holidays and in making sure everything is just calm and peaceful and nice for all of you. And with that, I'll do Andy's thing, keep it classy, Lacey. The meeting's adjourned.